Good morning, it's nine o'clock. We'll begin the Tuesday, December 4th, meeting of the County Board. I'd like to ask everybody to first stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that for the record, let's note that there's a copy of the Open Meetings Act here on the north wall of the legislative chambers. For those that may need to be aware of it, for health purposes, there's an automatic defibrillator in the back wall of the chamber. Also, if you have any cell phones, I ask you to silence them or turn them off. With that, before we begin the official business of the day, I'd like to begin with a moment of silence in remembrance of the passing of the 41st President, President George H. Walker Bush, as he is being laid to rest today. I figure despite what your leanings may have been, from what I've heard from people that have known him and in readings just curiously, I think you have to say he had a great life of service to this country and deserves a moment of silence for us here today, so let's have a moment of silence.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. With that, we will call to order the Douglas County Board of Equalization.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Here.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, November 20, 2018. Letter B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, December 11, 2018, as the day for hearing on the certified assessment corrections. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Kraft.
Just a reminder that, Commissioner, for those in the audience standing at home, Commissioner Boyle's vote will not appear, but he does vote yes, as well as the rest of commissioners, motion passes.
With that, we'll go to item C, citizens' comments. It's an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Equalization-related items that are not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments under the Board of Equalization?
Mr. Boo.
Not there yet. Seeing no citizens' comments, we'll go to resolutions. Item D, approving the corrections of the personal property affecting the tax list based on taxpayers submitted personal property returns, many returns, clerical error, or changes to status of business. And item E, approving the application for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval. What's the will of the board?
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, is that second? Second by Commissioner Morgan. Mr. Clerk, you wanted your opportunity.
Does that include the Germanist, the...
Okay.
On item E, there's Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership has a vehicle on one of the motor vehicles being recommended for tax exemption, and I'm just making note that I am served on that board.
Thank you. Seeing that, this motion's second, please vote.
Motion passes, all present voting yes.
We'll now call to order the Douglas County Board of Commissioners' meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Here.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A, under medicine claims, approval of the minutes of the tri-county meeting held Thursday, November 15, 2018, and the Board of Commissioners' meeting held Tuesday, November 20, 2018. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, December 4, 2018. What's the will of the board?
Move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Boyle.
Motion passes, all commissioners voting yes.
Item two is the consent agenda. There's 13 items of consent, under the consent agenda. What is the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Boyle.
I have some questions. I would like to see the, in the future, I'd like to see resolutions such as F, which is a lawsuit against this county, also item G, which is a lawsuit against the county, pretty sizable, and any other litigation. I'd like to at least have the name of the county department that was involved, so we can have some idea of what's happening, maybe, and I particularly think that the taxpayers probably should have some kind of notice, if it's possible, on what item G is, because it's $275,000, if that's appropriate, and I don't know whether there is or not.
Noted. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I agree with that, and, you know, it's come to my attention that we spent a lot of time in exec session talking about settlements of a few thousand dollars and not very much time at all talking about hundreds of thousands of dollar settlements. So it'd be good if we had some discussion, particularly regarding larger settlements like this.
Seeing that, there's a motion's second.
Now. Pardon me?
Now.
Well, I just, I guess we voted on it, but...
That's what I'm saying, because if you want, I haven't voted, so I'll hold up and go ahead.
Well, I don't, I don't know a legal counsel. I'll ask a legal counsel if it's appropriate, and if it is, would you please just tell us briefly what it is and if it's permissible? I don't know whether there is or not.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Teresa here at County Attorney's Office. I'm not sure what your specific question is, Commissioner. I'm happy to give you a very lengthy, detailed explanation in executive session with regards to the litigation, if you would like one. This is something that the board has been informed about previously, and this case is one that we were authorized to settle.
You know, I realize that, except that people in the audience and the taxpayers don't know who we're paying, and I don't, I don't know if you can disclose that, if you can, unless there's some other kind of an agreement. If there is an agreement not to disclose, then if you'd say so, that would answer the question, but if there's not, I think it'd be helpful to tell the taxpayers what the $275,000 is for briefly, you know, who's getting the money and what department was involved or whatever, if you can.
So the case, as you'll note, the settlement agreement cites the applicable litigation, and that's available on its public record. CI 166134. Anyone can request the records from the court if they so wish, and so there is additional information available to the public. This did involve a car accident and is a resolution of that, of that case.
Okay, what department was involved?
I would have to, I apologize, Commissioner, I'm, that's slipping my mind at this time.
Okay, well, I mean, no one's going to look up CI, whatever it is, I know how to, and probably Kavanaugh, but, not probably Kavanaugh, definitely Commissioner Kavanaugh. But anyway, I would like that in the future. I do think it's, who's that?
Sheriff.
Well, she's the, who's the...
Okay, thank you very much. I apologize. I've had some assistance from my colleagues in the back row, and it's the sheriff's office. I apologize for having that slip my mind. We have several, we have several litigations ongoing.
Right. It was an auto accident, and the sheriff's department was involved, then it was the citizens whose car was hit or whatever, right?
Yes, that is, that is correct.
That's plenty, that's, I think, what we needed to know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. And in the future, if you could do some kind of a little thing to, no names are necessary, just what department and, you know, who ran over who.
Motion passes, all commissioners voting yes.
Item four, citizens' comments. It's an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Commissioners-related items that are not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
I don't know if this is appropriate a time to speak, but I'm here to speak about the preferential treatment that was given Operation Youth Success during deliberation over approval of community-based aid funding. Last Thursday, we met to look over the recommendations from the advisory committee that you all appointed to vet the applications and make recommendations. They did not recommend funding for any organization in North Omaha, and they gave reasons why the grants that were submitted were not recommended. They also did not recommend that we find, that we fund Operation Youth Success. However, with the effort led by Commissioner Rogers, the board engaged in over an hour and a half conversation, and the result was to fund Operation Youth Success with the $95,000 that was left over from the proposed grant application. I was concerned because, if I may, pass out these maps. One is a ZIP code breakdown of showing from 2016 to 2018, the number of youth that are detained by ZIP code, and as you can see, when the map gets to you, the color-coded map, we have two ZIP codes, 68111 and 68104, who have more youth combined that are detained in those two ZIP codes than the 19 ZIP codes west of 72nd Street. The second map shows a breakdown per district of the third quarter, youth who were presented to probation, and you can see Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Rogers have the largest number of kids. My concern is that not only do we not have any funding going into programs in North Omaha with the greatest need, but the preferential treatment that was given to OYS, to recommend funding for an initiative, an idea, a committee that doesn't even have legal existence, to recommend funding for this organization at the expense of not recommending funding for a program that's serving kids. One would think if DMC is a priority, if system reform is a priority, if addressing our kids and using this money for the purpose it was intended, that we would have erred in overriding that committee on the side of serving a program that serves kids rather than a, an idea, a concept, that has not proven to be effective in the four years. Operation Youth Success gets $240,000 of private philanthropy. The main reason given for wanting to override the decision and fund them was so we can assure to get the match from the private philanthropy. You know, this is a situation, again, the public-private partnership, where the tail is wagging the dog. The purpose of community-based aid was never intended to ensure matches by private philanthropy. The purpose was to serve kids in their community, and I need this body to please join the community in their efforts to fix this wrong. It can only be corrected at your level. That Operation Youth Success Steering Committee is a train wreck that is never going to do what's best for our kids because we're looking out for the survival of that failed initiative because nobody wants to pull the plug on failure at that table. This program, along with JDAI, receives $503,000 a year of taxpayers' dollars to serve kids that supposedly are to reform a system. We have not brought about any reform, and so the last straw for me, as a member of Operation Youth Success Steering Committee, was to sit at a table, and I couldn't even get a second to discuss my motion to consider funding a program that serves our kids who are most impacted. And so I'm asking you all to correct this wrong, to reject that budget, to do whatever it takes to bring this matter to the attention of the commissioners, because this is where it's going to have to be solved. It is not going to be solved at that Operation Youth Success Steering Committee level because they support Operation Youth Success. And the mere fact that the Steering Committee are the same people who are approving the funding and making the recommendation to override the, the recommendation of the advisor committee, it's the same institute, it's the same committee or the same initiative that's, that's, that's responsible for overseeing and administering community-based aid. There is a conflict of interest with this same body who is applying for funding being the same body who's approving, who's getting it. So I'm asking for two things. One, that you all dissolve Operation Youth Success as, as your reform initiative to help with kids, and that, two, that you correct the wrong that just happened last Thursday with them getting $95,000 of this community-based aid dollars, when you have a program out here that is serving kids that did not get a dime. We have no money going into North Omaha in 2019 to serve our kids, and that is something we must correct. Thank you.
Can't ask, can't ask. Thank you.
I would also say, I asked that this issue be placed on the agenda, and I have a problem with an issue this important, I have to come here and stand, and I can't even get the engagement of commissioners who the citizens elected. This issue is important enough where I need more than just seven faces looking at me. I need you all to be able to ask questions of the people who took off from their day to be here. This is a disrespect. We are taxpayers. We are citizens. We voted for you all, and for our only recourse is to come here and have seven people look at us without understanding our problem, and we have kids, we have two kids from this community who are sitting at the Lincoln Regional Center. We have a kid, one of those kids was in my program, I saw him spiral downward through this system because there was no services to serve him. We have, look at this map, these are not just numbers, these are kids, and every Friday and every Monday, when I go down to Nebraska Correctional Youth Facility, I get to see what it looks like, and it may not mean nothing to you all, but to my community who is losing our kids by the hundreds, we have no generation left, and shame on those commissioners whose kids are dying from their district, and they're not stepping up and speaking out.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, we can't...
I have a point of personal privilege. Someone wrote a rule under citizen comments that says that the county board is not permitted to respond to taxpayers' comments, and I absolutely oppose that completely, and I want to know who wrote that and when we voted on that position.
The rule was suggested by legal counsel. We voted on that at the beginning of the year in the normal process of the rules.
Okay, then I call that back up today for reconsideration. I'm really, I was not aware of that, and the first time, I think, most of us found out that we're not on the inside, was when we were shut down. Don't look like you don't know what I'm talking about. When I had to go around the podium, and if I have to, I will again, but I think as a, as a commissioner elected, I have a responsibility to respond to comments that are made by concerned taxpayers. That's how I feel. I mean, sitting here and staring at Levon is not the answer, so I intend to respond one way or the other, and I think this, if legal counsel would like, I know you think this isn't on the public notice or whatever, but that's not the give and take of a political atmosphere. I mean, people will say things, and they deserve responses. You can't stare at her and say, "I'm sorry, our rules don't allow us to tell you what we think or ask you questions or respond." So I intend to respond one way or the other, Mr. Chair. Will you allow us to do it from our seats, or do we have to go around to the podium?
By the rule and the practice that we've done, and we've done with several things, you can't comment during this period. If you want to go there, that's fine. With that, who's next?
Mr. Chair, if I may, for the next person, when I was passing out those handouts, one of the commissioners thought that maybe the Levon did not state her name, so I was just going to say for the record that was Levon Stennis Williams that was speaking.
My name is Mike Boyle. I live at 1027 Marcy Plaza, Unit 201, in Omaha, and I'm a commissioner who represents District One of the Douglas County Board. I want to have dialogue with the people who are here in the audience who are talking about a complaint that needs to be aired in the public, and we're drifting from what our public purpose is when we don't allow give and take. We had really robust conversations with people about the juvenile court system, and Commissioner Borgeson led that charge, and I agreed with it totally, and others on the board did as well, and change occurred because of that, I believe, and it helped us form better, helped me form better opinions. I want to hear from the people in the audience, and I want to be able to talk to them, and if I have to get up and come around here, I will, but I do want commissioners who are really knowledgeable on the ground, Commissioner Rogers and perhaps Commissioner Borgen, Borgeson, excuse me, LeFong, I'd like you to communicate to the people who are here to speak, it's very important, but I'm very disappointed in this policy, and I intend to bring it up at another time. We need to, we need to clean up our act.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I don't know if this is related to item I or not, but I'm going to speak to and try to answer Ms. Williams a little bit. I've kind of snooped around on these issues since around 2014, when I got involved with some ladies that were looking into problems in the juvenile system, and I have to say that I'm very dismayed that I just heard, once again, that you people cannot respond to us citizens. But you want to claim that there's lots of transparency and that it's all on your website, and it's posted on the wall over there, but it isn't, and unless every citizen goes to every meeting that you have, which they're not allowed to, we don't really know what you're doing, what you're talking about. But I'd like to suggest that Ms. Williams, to Ms. Williams and all of the people that are trying to make a difference in Omaha, that we can't always rely on outsiders and nonprofits and people that have best practices, who know nothing about Omaha, know nothing about our children, know nothing about our schools, and I'd like to suggest that I'm tired of the disparity figure that we come up with because we study the kids that are detained in our juvenile justice system, and we come up with statistics, and now we come up with statistics that West Omaha gets all the money. Well, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't buy that, and I'd like to suggest that maybe all of these programs that have been money spent on since 2014 and before, by the way, when it was referred to as OPS OYS or OYS OPS, and there was a contract signed for programs, that apparently those programs, all the money spent on them and all the best practices have not made a big difference. So maybe that money should go ahead of the detention system to the school system, but yes, we have child find and early intervention, but if you don't change what you do in those early interventions, you're going to have the same thing. There's not a lot of real success. Why do we have more population being detained, or maybe now we're going to think about detaining them because we're going to early intervene now in six months or three months old, and tell the parents they have to go to a university down at the Learning Community Council? We're getting away from citizens' freedom. When you can't respond to me or Levon, Levon Stennis Williams, that's anti-constitutional. So you do need to revisit that.
Thank you, Larry.
I can't visit with each one of you privately. I need to visit with you publicly.
Jim Kavanaugh, Douglas County Commissioner, District Two. I wasn't going to speak on this, but I received a letter yesterday that I'd like to read into the record from Nebraska Foster Parent Advocacy Network by Bobby Lout, the network coordinator. It goes to this, and it's kind of troubling, following up on some of the comments that you've heard. It says, "Dear Commissioner, I am submitting this letter of inquiry in regards to an issue of concern that I intend to bring to your attention as a resident within your service district and a concerned citizen regarding governmental transparency of tax dollars. On Thursday, November 29, 2018, I was in attendance at the public Operation Youth Success OYS meeting hosted at the University of Nebraska at Omaha. The intent of the meeting focused on the fiscal year 2019 community-based juvenile service aid grantee awards as proposed by the advisory committee selected by Operation Youth Success board members. In short review, there was an overview of the funding process, which included grant requirements, community team, Douglas County Community Plan, community-based aid intent, and application requests. In addition, there was an advisory council established by the Steering Committee of Operation Youth Success, who selected seven individuals to review submitted grants and make proposed funding requests to the Steering Committee of Operation Youth Success. The advisory committee reviewed and made proposed recommendations to, one, fully fund applicant requests, two, partially fund applicant requests, or three, deny funding applicant requests, which were all within the scope of the advisory committee's responsibility. However, the Steering Committee of Operation Youth Success at the discussion stage recommended that Operation Youth Success, OYS, who was, quote, "not recommended for funding," unquote, be allocated approximately $98,000, which was supported by a board vote. In the spirit of transparency, equity, and validity to the community-based juvenile service aid grant application process, I formally request a review of the process and feedback and guidance provided in order to ensure that, quote, "all organizations are treated equitable and follow, and follow the process and policies as outlined in order to access, to assess their, these critical dollars. Sincerely, Bobby R. Lout, MS Network Coordinator." I just bring this to your attention, and I'll, I'll forward it to you. I received it by email late yesterday. This is troubling. It appears that the recommendations were overruled by the board, and there was no discussion by this board, no public discussion, of how, why, or what we should do with that money that we put into this. So I'm following this closely, and I think Commissioner Boyle is right, we should probably put this on the agenda. I don't know why it wasn't put on the agenda originally, but for open discussion of how we're spending these tax dollars. Thank you.
Bobby Lout, Executive Director of the Nebraska Foster Parent Advocacy Network. That was my letter that I sent to you, Commissioner, as being within your district. I am at 6112 North 78th Avenue. I pastor Believers Fellowship Church located at 2761 Lake Street. That letter was sent specifically, I have my background, I used to be the statewide director of the Nebraska Correctional Education Connection, oversaw all 11 state prisons, all the educational services via Metropolitan Community College. Over the last five to six months, I specifically, as an involved, active, not only pastor, but community citizen, began to look and see what's happening with this whole juvenile justice reform. I speak on behalf of not only myself and not on specific programs, because my program did not apply and/or seeks funding. However, I look at you all as elected officials, now we are outside of a midterm, some of you all have been reelected, and now it's time to actually pay attention to what the citizens are saying. I would hope that you, right now, you have two commissioners, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Ann Borgeson, who's actively involved, but we need some more eyes on this particular subject. One of the things that I'll reiterate specifically from that meeting, I applaud, good, the money came, it's CBA dollars, however, the process was absolutely not followed. The advisor committee was set up, that, that's good, that was good, because last time, a recommendation was made and some funding things happened which should not have happened. So this particular time, good move, advisor committee set up, advisor committee made recommendations. PJ Morgan, each one of you all had signed specific persons to sit on advisory committee, look at these grant applications independently. They did a great job. Come to be, at the, at the meeting on Thursday, a detailed overview was given, some, some projects were not funded, some were partially funded, some were fully funded, and come to be that this, this, individuals on this group and, and OYS sat there and took one, one, one grant entity who was not funded, and then makes a proposal to actually have them funded that is not transparent, and then to have elected officials to shut citizens down, you all, that, that, that has to stop, and if it doesn't stop, you're going to keep seeing citizens come and become very vocal and call you on the carpet for your actions and your behaviors on this particular board. These are our recommendations that have been looked into, it should be revisited... And not only here, but then we'll also be taking it to the Crime Commission, because those proposals specifically for OYS, OYS, it should be revisited. Thank you so much for your time.
Good morning. My name is Rodney Evans. I am the CEO of Metairie Youth Services Maze. These are my business partners. Go ahead.
Patrick Taylor.
And I'm Tiffany Duncan.
Our operations are at 5150 Ames Avenue. We're here today to just simply talk a little bit about transparency, conflict of interest, and just, you know, my mom, my mom, my mom always used to say that I have a big nose, you know? And with my big nose, when things don't smell right, I'm that guy who will vocally speak out and say, something doesn't smell right. So what I do know about this process is, and, and again, as far as Maze not being recommended for funding, we've been in operation for five years, we haven't been recommended for funding for anything, whether we were nonprofit or for-profit. It's not a big deal for us. We're going to continue to do the work that we do at Maze, whether we're funded or not. What we don't appreciate is to be ridiculed with, with people not having, not having their, their, their right shirt on when they need to have their right shirt on, in a sense, because you hear somebody say something in one ear, and then they totally turn around and do the opposite in the next ear. You, you have a steering committee who made recommendations, who I believe the steering committee was appointed by OYS, and then you have the OYS board to then overturn what the recommendations of the steering committee was. To me, it would make sense, and again, I'm, this isn't my process, and I don't have that skin in the game. To me, it would make sense to say, we have $95,000 left over. Let's take a look at other programs that did get funded. Maybe we can partially fund them, maybe we could, you know, just open it up that way, instead of just saying, hey, let's just give it all to one particular organization. That is what didn't smell right, and that is why I'm here today. Again, my, my objective is not to come up here and cause rift in the community. Maze is a small organization, we, we operate out of a house, we have, you know, 15 kids at max is our max capacity. We're not a, we're not Boyce Town and multimillion-dollar organizations who also receive this funding. You know, we, we, we have a very simple, simple program and a simple budget. All we ask is that things be done fairly and transparently, is what we ask.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hello. My name's Laura McCormick. Seattle, Washington is where I'm from, but we all are acquainted, I do believe. So the reason I'm here today is to talk about my lengthy involvement in some of these matters. And I think, I hope that you all will, will respect that. The problems with OYS are longstanding, and there has not been active community, community engagement really since inception. There are enormous conflicts of interest in terms of who decides what is funded, and much of the money does not go back into the communities where these kids come from. And Commissioner Rogers, I have communicated with you about this repeatedly. I have communicated with you in writing and in meeting format about these issues. I don't understand why it is acceptable to the people that you represent that you are not more open to active engagement and also conversations about these issues. I was devastated to learn that one of the young men that I worked with is in the Lincoln Regional Center, devastated. And when I saw that news report, in the pit of my stomach, I knew, I knew it was him. And he is just one of many children in this community that are passed around from placement to placement. The notion that you all don't know that there are, are not services for, for young people, that's, that's not true. That's, that's the polite way that I'll express that. And I'm tired of watching money, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, be directed towards influential, politically-connected people. I believe the assertion was that part of the reason this made sense, this, this funding of OYS, was because a philanthropic partner was matching those dollars. I think that is problematic. I think much of the way that OYS operates is problematic, and there is a paper trail for all of what I assert. I have made formal complaints to the Attorney General about the lack of transparency, the lack of compliance with open meetings laws and public records laws. I'm told that because it's a public partner, private partnership, they don't necessarily have to comply. These issues are longstanding, and you all know about it. So talk is cheap. When will action be taken? Lives depend upon it. There's, there's young men from Omaha at the Lincoln Regional Center right now who depend upon it. Stop talking. Start listening to people in the community, please.
My name is Carol Zechek, and I live at 2518 North 64th Street. And I completely agree with everything everyone has been saying so far, and a lot of you are getting your asses handed to you today, it seems like. But my, my take on a few things happens to be that, aside from lack of transparency, there is no room for compromise, which is what I do not comprehend. I don't understand why you are so unwilling to even look at additional possibilities. The $140 million juvenile jail downtown, you could take that money and really put money into programs for these kids. You know, gosh, on the East Coast, they started having kids doing meditation when they, instead of a timeout, and they found results. I mean, there are so many different things that have changed over the years, and you guys have a mindset to, this is what we're going to do. That's the way we're going to do it. And you're not even listening, you're forced to listen today to some of these people. And they have valid concerns, valid complaints. And I really don't appreciate when we do not get to even be listened to at these meetings. We're all taxpayers, we're paying your salaries, and you should be listening to us and what we have to say. It's, it's just ridiculous that there is no money being put towards mental health services for these children, rather than the shiny building that you want to put downtown. And that, to me, is, I, I still also have one question I've asked over and over, still haven't gotten an answer. I want to know what happens with the overflow when you get that new building done and there's only room for 48 kids? And on average, there's 70. Where did the overflow go? And do you shackle them to transport them? Because you're making such a big deal about that one small issue. I don't see how building this fancy new jail is going to help with the current problems we have that are not being solved, especially when you have monies that are not going to the proper people, the proper, you know, agencies that need them. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
And I'm sure there's a don't speak twice rule, but I'm going to break that as well. My name is Mike Boyle, 1027 Marcy Plaza, Unit 201. I was talking with legal counsel, and I'm curious if, it's my understanding that any group that we appoint is acting as, as us, and they have to follow, they, they have to follow all the state laws and all the rules that we have to. And that includes an open meetings, open meeting, as well as announcing that, and having a written agenda. And an item adding, if this is what happened, an item adding almost $100,000 to an organization that was not on the agenda, I, I don't think that could be done if it's not on the agenda. I don't think they have the ability to do that. Maybe they do, but I've asked legal counsel, and of course, I don't really get quite the answer I want. But I, I really think we ought to look into this. If, if they're acting in our interests and doing things that we've delegated to them, I think they have to do it according to the law, and I'm not sure they did.
Anyone else?
Good morning. My name is Michaela Jackson. I reside at 14921 Queens Drive here in Omaha, Nebraska. I come to you not only as a taxpayer, as an educator in our community, but as a parent of a system-involved youth. I want you all to know that I have watched firsthand, not only with young people I work with, but with my own son, what these young people go through, and it's traumatic. Traumatic as a parent who has resources. I can't imagine how it must feel as parents without any kind of resources. My son has been all over this country as a system-involved youth. He's been in the Douglas County Youth Center. He's participated in the probation system in Omaha. He was sent to a facility in Colorado. He's been sent to a facility in Springfield, Missouri. Back in Omaha now, he is currently residing at Boyce Town as being successful. I'd like to advocate today, though, for the Maze program, who has been exceptionally influential into his progress. As a matter of fact, every time he brings something up in his success and he shares a story, he always says, "Mom, can you invite Mr. Rodney? Can you call the guys from Maze to come see what I'm doing?" They have been so influential in his success, and it's important that we recognize the local interventions and programs that we have available and keep those funded. I can't imagine having to spend those kinds of dollars to send more and more kids out of state to these programs who I wouldn't wish my next-door neighbor's dog on. But when they're system-involved, unfortunately, as a parent, I don't have much pull in that. But please consider advocating and promoting for our local organizations and needs that are being effective and influential. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Kind of new to this, but I do want to get off my chest. There's just kind of word to, to the wise, to all you smart individuals. Regardless of the process, you know, you know, with steering committees and, you know, all of, all of these systems in place, the fact remains that a majority of funding does seem to go to organizations that are administrative in nature. And I do feel like if you have a grasp on the actual issue that we're talking about, whether it's keeping kid out of the juvenile justice system or wrapping kids around the proper services, you know, you do have to understand that part of the problem possibly could be that we put more resources behind, like, like the young man suggested, the best-kept practices, or have you dotted your i's or crossed your t's to the point where we're able to play the game of giving you funding? But the, the, the results are going to come from organizations that, that have a better grasp on the problem. And, and, you know, hear me out real quick, I'm trying to explain this properly, but it doesn't take data to see that a kid at 13 years old is getting ready to somehow enter into the juvenile justice system. You know, we have alternative to diversion, alternatives to detention programs, we have diversion. We talk about prevention, but we don't really allocate, it doesn't seem like we allocate dollars for prevention in the sense like we're, aversion would probably be another thing to discuss before diversion. Whereas, you know, there's, there's, there's parents and teachers that say, hey, I just saw this kid disrespect this young lady. No, he hasn't committed a crime yet. But everyone in the building and every teacher that comes across this young man knows that it's a matter of time before this kid is going to be swept up in, into the system. And there's no data, there's no instruction manual that would be able to fix that. What would be able to fix that are those that, and hear me out again, because I do believe that there are perceptions, and everyone has implicit biases. I do think that some community organizations, there is a perception and an implicit bias that we're, those organizations aren't necessarily experts, like the other experts that have titles behind their names, like, like a therapist or a counselor, you know? But without the title, if I'm able to build a relationship with a kid where he feels comfortable about telling me the challenges of his sexuality, if he, if he's able to feel comfortable about telling me the challenges of his gang life and, and the issues with his father and how he's either not trying to, to, to fill those shoes, or how he is filling those shoes, that's where the true change is, is going to happen. The, the, the minority youth make up about 14% of the population, Mike, sorry.
Finish your thought.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Minority youth make about 14% of the population, but they make up about 62% of, of the population in detention. And I'm just saying that that number has never really changed, no matter how much data and administration you, you throw at it, that number has, has not really changed regardless of the best-kept practices. So what I'm saying is, we need to shift the model in a sense of the hierarchy of how we apply services, who's getting funding, not that those other organizations aren't necessary. I just feel like we kind of got to look at the problem with a different lens and a different perception.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you all. Let me say, I can't speak, I can speak, I think I can speak for the board. If any of you all have any questions you want me to explain, please reach out to me. I am happy to come to you and explain it. Unfortunately, we can't comment on this, but it was stated that we can state some facts to clarify, so I'd, I'd like to just state this for the record. So, you know, there is a $1.6 million given by the state for us to give. From statements made of the allocation of the $1.6 million to east of 72nd Street to west of 72nd Street, $1.1 million is given east of 72nd Street. $1,006 is given, $100,006 is given west of 72nd Street. To the community versus the county, $1.1 million of that money is given into the community, and only $475,000 of that money is given to support county and state functions. Of the funding of the $1.6 that is given to direct costs versus indirect costs, and direct cost is to service, $1.2 million of that money is given to agencies for direct service, and $444,000 of that money is given to indirect services. So again, I can only state that for, I can state that for the record, the fact piece. If anyone wants to contact me, please contact me, and I will explain to you in detail. Thank you all. With that, we'll go to item six, which is the public hearing.
Excuse my lack of memory, but have we voted on this whole allegation of money, allegation?
It's not under the board. What the board voted on is, each board has a member that is represented on their recommending body. That's what the board voted on.
So we only vote on who apply, we don't vote, it's not like the convention money where it comes to us and we actually vote on it?
No. We, we eventually, yeah, we eventually vote to accept it.
Well, why don't we say that?
They'll do that in July, but we can only vote to accept or deny. By the Crime Commission rules, the, there is a community team that is designated, and the team that looked at that money is designated as the community team.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, again, we'll go to item six, which is public hearing, letter A. Class C, C dash 122844 license for beer, wine, and distilled spirits of Sorry Room LLC DBA. Sorry Room, 7040 North 102nd Circle, Omaha, Nebraska, 68122. With that, we will open the public hearing on this item. Anybody want to speak on the public hearing? Please, sir.
Good morning. My name is Nathan Newhouse with the Swire Room. I didn't get a chance to send off the mailing labels to the, the people in the 500-foot square search, 500-foot search. So I'm not sure what the next step is on that. Anything else to add?
So, Mr. Clerk, if you want to explain the situation.
Sure. You know, that's a, Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk. So that's a, I'll have Ellen jump in if I say anything wrong, but the requirement, that's actually not an LCC requirement, that's a county board requirement, and an LCC is fine if they're aware and they're okay. If we, you know, vote to approve today without the notice requirement to the, was it within 500 feet?
So Ellen, correct me if I'm wrong, the situation is that there's a notice that has to be given to people within 500 feet. The applicant has to get this approved by December 10th. If I'm right, the applicant didn't get all the responses- If I'm right, the applicant didn't get all the responses back from the individuals from 500 feet, and that was puts us in a situation today trying to fulfill that deal.
Yeah, that's why if we moved it to next week, it'd be a day late for him, and he wouldn't be able to move forward with the liquor application... Or liquor license.
Commissioner Borgson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. But the notices were sent. They just weren't responded back to you.
I think there's some confusion. I received the mailing list out of here in front of me. I was under the impression that somebody from here would mail them out with appropriate, like, letter to each person.
Okay.
So they haven't been sent out yet as far as I know.
So they weren't sent?
They were not.
Okay. And is this an existing establishment that has been there, or... And you're just taking over?
Yeah, I'm just taking over an existing business that had a liquor license.
That had a liquor license?
Yep.
And you're probably not the appropriate one to ask, but has there been any issues in the past with this establishment that you know of? You're just taking it over because as a new...
As a new owner, yes. As far as I know, there was no issues. It's just like a wedding venue for wedding receptions.
Right. Okay.
Commissioner Duda.
Could I suggest, if there's a time element here where we need to do this quickly, he could still send these letters out. We aren't the final ones to say yea or nay. All we do is recommend to the State Liquor Control Commission. He could still send out the letters and say, "If anybody has any problems, address them to the Liquor Control Commission."
Yeah, it's our rule.
Yeah, it's our rule. So I don't think that we can say, "Oh, it's fine not to send out letters," when we tell everybody they have to send these letters out. I think you should still send the letters out, but I don't think that that has to hold us up from taking... Making a recommendation to them.
Okay. We're still in a public meeting. I mean, Commissioner Moore, Boyle.
I hate to blow everybody's ego, but we don't have anything to say about this, actually. It's all decided by the State Liquor Control Commission, so we're just kind of like the city council. We're just, you know, it's kind of like approving these tax exemptions the assessor brings down, you know? Anyway, so I think we ought to give this gentleman what he needs, and he can sit like, as Commissioner Duda said, let him send out the notices. I, you know, I don't... He can go directly to the Liquor Commission for that matter. He doesn't need to do this with us. But anyway, that's what I do to kind of move things along.
Anyone else want to comment in this matter in public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the post.
Question, would you be... If we do approve it with that contingency, is that okay with you to send these letters out just saying?
Yeah, I can get these out today with...
Fine.
Yeah, no problem.
Anyone else want to comment during public hearing? We will close the public hearing. What's the will of the board?
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Borgson. Please vote.
Thanks.
Yes. Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes.
To committee's discussion, letter A is finance. Number one is the budget report. Commissioners Morgan and Boyle.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyle.
I think we need... I'm going to talk to Commissioner Morgan. Didn't get a chance to yet today. Forgot to, but I think we need to take a look at the budget and what's going on with the spending, because I think in light of some of the things that are happening with our young people and mental health problems, I think we may have to do something with our budget and really get our priorities in shape. We need to do something very aggressively on the care of the mentally ill in our facilities and on the street. So I'd like to plan to talk to our finance guru and Commissioner Morgan, also a finance guru, and see what we can come up with, if anything.
Maybe time to me.
We have a public meeting, but, okay?
Good.
Thanks.
We'll go to item C, which is the Child and Youth Services Committee. Item one is the Quarterly Juvenile Detention Alternative Initially Quarter Data Memo. Ms. Michelle Hug... I mean, Michelle Salters from probation. Salters is right, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm working on remembering myself. It throws me for a loop every time I say it. I have to write it down to remember it. Thank you. All right, well, good morning. I am Shelley Salter. I am the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Coordinator for Douglas County, and I know we've been here before, and we're going to look at our third-quarter data memo from our data committee. I want you to look real quick at the third slide. This is something different, but I was hoping that this might help everybody kind of make this issue a little smaller. I know the issue seems pretty huge. We hear about a lot of kids, but kind of here's the reality of what we look at every month in JDAI. The Quarterly Review Summary is the tool that we use to put all the information in about all the kids who come to the Douglas County Youth Center. And although the report that comes out, there are probably six different reports that come from it, I think this is probably the most important part for the purpose of this data memo, might help understand what kids I'm talking about today. So when we look at this, it's pretty simple. Total number of kids, 219. That's way to the left. Now I want you to go way to the right and see where it says youth not screened, 17. To the left of that, it says auto hold one. To the left of that, it shows us all the kids who were released of these 219 and how they scored on the risk assessments instrument, whether they were low, medium, or high. The next column to the left tells us the same thing about kids who we released at probation intake with some alternative, some condition to them being released. Again, shows us how they scored on the risk assessment instrument, low, medium, or high. So the column that's listed detained on the top, this is the column that is our data memo. So this column tells us that we had 25 kids who scored low, 24 kids who scored medium, and 50 kids who scored high on the risk assessment instrument. All of these kids are under the detained category. So the kids that we're talking about in JDAI, the kids we're talking about in the data memo are the 25 who scored low and the 24 who scored medium but were detained. So we have over 75,000 kids in Douglas County. For the purposes of JDAI, for this data memo and for kids who are unnecessarily detained, we're talking about 49 kids. So I know the issue seems huge when we talk about it in the context of juvenile justice reform, but as for this one system point, these are the kids that our data memo attempts to talk to you about. So general information from the QRS that we have for third quarter, July, August, September, we had a total of 219 youth that were considered. 202 of those kids were brought to probation intake. One of those kids was detained because of an auto hold. We've talked about this before. We have a couple of reasons that we have to detain kids. One...
Where is that in here?
It's up there.
We can't read it.
Okay. Well, it would be under General Information, the first section. First section, very top first, right under the first blue line. No, it doesn't look the same.
I have it, you can't read it.
Okay. So a total of 202 kids did receive the benefit of the risk assessment instrument. They came through law enforcement to probation intake, and the risk assessment was completed. Again, we have a couple of reasons that kids are automatically detained. One is that they would be an escapee from a secure institution, and the other is that if we have kids who are runaways from other states who find themselves in Douglas County, when we go do a check on that child, if there's a warrant in another state for the child, then we do have to hold them to return them to the state that has issued a warrant for them. So we did have one kid come in in July, August, September. That was the situation. They were a runaway from another state. They had a warrant. We have to keep them to send them home. 17 of the kids, and that's that first thing we looked at way to the right where it says not screened, so we have 17 kids who were not screened. That means kids who did not come through law enforcement to probation intake to have a risk assessment done to decide if these are kids who are likely to fail to appear to a court hearing or reoffend. So these are kids that are detained outside of that process that we have. So of these, all 17 were detained. And then the reasons they were detained. 10 of them were detained due to a court order. They were at a court hearing. Something occurred, and the judge detained them from their court hearing. We have two kids who are immediate custody orders. These are kids who the county attorney has issued a warrant and immediate custody order saying this child is in danger to themselves and need to be located and brought to probation intake, and those two kids were detained. We have three kids who lost an alternative to detention. This is the home program. We have one program in Douglas County for alternative to detention who are allowed to detain. It is the home program, and in this quarter, we had three kids detained because they failed that program. And then the two kids... We have two kids who are currently... Or were detained in this quarter because of U.S. Marshall holds. I'll tell you, I get no more information than that about these youth, what type of charges they're on, no other information, but it is something where the U.S. Marshall has asked the county to hold these kids in our detention center for them.
Do you think they're undocumented?
No, I don't. They're Native American youth. Not quite sure.
They were here first.
Right. All right. And then this is just breaking down all the kids on that first thing we looked at. So it tells us, the blue is the total number of youth based on race who was presented to probation intake. The red is the number of those kids who were detained. So if 113 African-American youth were presented to probation intake, 53 of those kids were detained. The green tells us about the kids who are not receiving the risk assessment instrument. This is really important to us, that kids get that benefit before they're detained. We should be looking at them objectively and seeing whether or not they have a chance of failing to appear or reoffending, and if they don't, those kids should be released. These are the kids who were the no-risk assessment instrument, where they were detained outside of the normal process. All right. So again, 202 kids were given the risk assessment instrument in this quarter, and 100 of them were detained. 63 were released, 39 were released with conditions. That goes back to that same first slide we looked at of the QRS, just telling us exactly what happened to all the youth. The average daily population of the youth center in this quarter was 58.1. Again, I want to remind you that there are 20 to 25 kids additionally who are in the youth center on adult charges that won't appear in this data. And then I know this one is very small, and it's all under third-quarter results on your data memos. So of the 100 kids who were detained, again, one was a risk assess... Or, sorry, it was an auto hold. 49 of the kids were considered low to medium risk, and that's on that first page where we saw under detained, low and medium. We're low to medium... Yes. There should be...
Next time, put a key on there.
It's on the back.
Is it?
Yep, same as last time, definitions and...
Oh, great, okay. The last page.
Yep.
I didn't look there. I expected on the last page. Go ahead. I'll take it out now.
All right. Let's see. So half of the kids were recommended to be served in our community. The re... So, and with the Quarterly Review Summary, it just answers three questions for us. How many kids were detained? What are the reasons they detained? And how long were they detained? So those are the first three questions. So the average length of stay in this quarter for these youths was 48.4 days. And then we talk about kids who were detained on warrants and violations of probation. So these are kids who have not committed new offenses, but they are somehow not following some type of a court order or provision of their probation terms. So we had 33 kids detained on warrant, and then an additional 16 kids who were detained for violation of probation. Again, none of these kids are scoring for detention. They're low to medium risk. And then of the kids who are detained at the Douglas County Youth Center in this quarter, 80% of the kids were youth of color who were placed in secure detention in this quarter. I want to talk a little about the 49. The 49 on the first page that were low and medium, the ones we're talking about here, kids who were detained for technical violations. It is really important to note, this is what we are working on in JDAI. The majority of these kids are kids who have lost or run from a court ordered placement. That placement could be their family home. When a judge orders a child to a placement, whether it is home or to a group home, and they lose that placement because they're not complying with the rules of the placement, or they run from that placement, and a warrant is issued to say they are unlawfully absent from their placement when they return to probation intake when they have been found by law enforcement. Probation intake detains these kids because they are in violation of a court order. So this is what our JDAI case processing team is really looking at right now. As you guys know, July 1st, there is new legislation about the purpose of detention in Nebraska, will not allow us to detain kids simply because they are arrested themselves, because a parent refuses to pick them up from the detention center, or because they've lost placement. So that is our biggest issue in Douglas County of why kids are detained. Of the 49, I believe 33 of them are kids who were detained because of this lost placement issue. So what our case processing team is looking at is a couple of different things. One is the idea of a two-tiered warrant system. Can we have a warrant for these kids that says that they have lost placement? When they are located, they come to probation intake for appropriate care and handling, allowing probation intake to employ the risk assessment instrument and place these kids home or possibly in a shelter while we reevaluate what services needed because they have lost the original placement. Another idea that that committee is working on is the idea of asking our juvenile court judges to change their court orders. When a child is ordered to group home placement specifically, could it just say if they lose this placement for any reason that they are returned to probation intake for appropriate care and handling? The reason is this: Most of the kids who lose their placement are not coming to us with new charges. It's not as if they're going off to some placement in a group home committing offenses there, and they're sending us back for this reason. It's a difficult thing for people to understand and accept. When kids come back from a group home, they don't have new charges. They score low on the risk assessment instrument, and there's a reason. Because the time that they have been there, they have not committed any new crimes. These are not kids. We have history saying they failed to appear to court hearings, but for whatever reason, this placement didn't work for them. And that's another part of JDAI, is to look at ourselves and say, "Are we sending kids to the correct placements?" Finding out from the kids exactly, "Why did you leave?" So we do have a statewide group that's working towards making sure we're ready for the new legislation, and one of the things that is planned is to do a survey of kids as they come in, specifically, "Why did you leave this placement?" And then as the adults, we have to be able to take the information from the kids, believe it's true, and then do some investigating and find out why they're leaving the placements. So basically, let's see, last page, because the warrants are our target population and have been for some time, we do look at length of stay of kids who have warrants, and at the end of this quarter, it was 37 days specifically for kids on warrants. So, any questions?
Shelley, before we go to Commissioner Borgson, explain to me in that 30, how many of those are... What's the percentage of those that are status offenders?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I could get it for you. Well, no, I don't.
Okay.
But I could get it for you.
Okay. Commissioner Borgson.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. So tell me one more time these... The last slide you just talked about.
Length of stay.
The length of stay in our detention, or the length of stay... Is that what you're talking about?
In detention for youth with warrants only, with just that charge broken out.
That have violated their current or a new warrant, or that they had been in detention or on probation and violated it?
Well, they would be on probation if there is a warrant.
But they violated it?
Well, they're unlawfully... They could be unlawfully absent from a...
They left a placement.
Placement, or...
They ran.
Or a violation of probation issued because they're losing placement, and the placement is called to say, "Hey, this, you know, we need this kid out by Thursday," or something. That might be a violation of probation. But the warrants are because the kid ran, we don't know where they are, so they're unlawfully absent. Do you want me to do that again?
Yeah, because what you just said, that it's not the kid's fault if they can't stay there. They're losing their placement. Or maybe I totally misunderstood.
Let me try it again. Let me try it again.
She's saying, Shelley, she's saying that the technical violations and those other warrants are because of kids running from placement, and they're having the warrant out on them. But you're saying the 48% are just those kids in that category.
Well, it's both. It goes two ways. So I'm placed at a group home, group home A. Okay? If I run from there and no one knows where I am, then a warrant is issued that says I'm unlawfully absent. There is another way where group home A might call you, my probation officer, on a Monday and say, "Hey, look, Shelley's not doing well in this program. She's not progressing. We're terminating her placement on Thursday." And so again, because of the court order, it would be a violation of probation, but the child would be detained from the group home. So we know where they are when they're losing placement, but when they run, we don't. So that's a warrant. Does that make sense?
And that's what represents this last slide?
Is the warrants.
Are the warrants.
Correct, correct. And the part about the kids is this, I don't know that, but it's the question we need to ask ourselves. When kids leave placement, why? And is there something we can do to correct that?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up because I've said it before, because we've talked a lot about the kids that run. And so to find the why is like totally important, in my opinion.
Absolutely. And we don't use, you know, we have several placements, but it's not like we have hundreds, so we can't figure this out. We should be able to talk to the kids and pinpoint what issues they may be having to see if it's something we can work with providers to correct.
But in the meantime, if they, they ran, then they don't get to go back there?
Not all of the time. It depends. There are times where kids will run from a group home and they're located within 24 hours and probation intake is able to call the group home and say, hey, Mary Ann's back. I know she ran yesterday. If they still have the bed and they're willing to take the kids, some kids can go back to placement. We do try that first. But if you're gone from that placement, you know, even over a week, the beds tend to get filled.
Right. So what's the, has anybody looked at, and this was brought up at one of the Child and Youth Committee meetings, I think, that the length of time our youth are on probation versus other places? So how our probation system works compared to others, which I think you stated...
Yeah, can I clarify that?
Yeah.
So that was the question I tried to ask to Shelley, now to get an idea of what was the status offenders on probation. And it was a fact stated to us in Georgetown that Nebraska is number two in the country with status offenders that are on probation. And the status offender term isn't a juvenile that commits an offense that when they turn 18, they won't be in violation of. That's meaning that we don't jail status offenders now. And the status offender status is not them doing a heinous crime, it's just that they're on probation for something that wouldn't be, would be a minor offense to some degree. That's the essence of the stat that you're stating. So we're number two. I think we had like 250 kids on probation for status offenses that in other states, they don't put them on probation. They put them on some type of service in the community to some degree and they're not under probation's watch.
All right. So let me kind of fix a little bit of that.
Okay, fix it.
So a status offender, that it is a crime that's committed only because you're a child, minor in possession, truancy...
No, wait a minute. I'm sorry, say that back up and start over.
Status offenses. So they are only an offense because of your age.
Right.
We can drink because we're adults, but you can't drink under 21. Kids, if they don't go to school, that's a status offense. It's not a crime as an adult, but it is an issue when you're a child. So there are things that are only criminal because of your age. And then it would be 19 in Nebraska would be the age that you are an adult. So what Chris is talking about, and this is, so I, should I, can I talk a little about Georgetown?
Clear it, yeah.
All right. So Chris and I are part of a team that was created through Ajmal Bindon, the Disproportionate Minority Contact Coordinator for Douglas County. We just came back a couple weeks ago from Georgetown where we participated in a capstone program there. We spent a week there. It was surrounding DMC, Disproportionate Minority Contact and Racial and Ethnic Disparities. So we spent a week learning about this particular topic, how to look at data related to it, how to create strategies. And one of the days we were there, Georgetown did put up on the board, all the states that were participating and how we rank as it relates to status offenders, these kids who have not committed crimes, if they were adults, how we rank compared to other states as far as incarceration and status offenders. And Chris is right, we were number two, the second worst in the nation across our state for kids who are status offenders who then find themselves detained at some other point. So for the Georgetown project, this is something I've talked to Ray Curtis, the court administrator. I've talked to Mary Weissick, the Chief of Probation. I've talked to Nicole Brundo, the county attorney, over the last couple of years about these kids. Because what we know, what best practice would tell us, what child adolescent development tells us, is these are kids who shouldn't even be on probation. And it's about 30% of our probation kids are these kids. Now, these are kids with higher needs, no doubt. These are the families that you go in and say, okay, we have some stuff here. That's Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs. We have some things we need to stabilize this family first. But it is still just, you know, not just, but it is still truancy. So how do we keep kids home and out of the juvenile justice system? These are kids who should be served by the county's diversion program, if not before that.
Social issues, you know, social issues that are having to come to the juvenile justice system to be served, which they should.
And so our Georgetown project right now consists, one, of first pulling the data because we don't do anything until we know the data. So we know it's about a third of the probation, all the kids on probation are there for status offenses. So now our next question is, so it's a little over 200 and I don't remember...
250.
50. And so now the question is, were these kids offered diversion? If they were offered diversion, why did they fail? If they were not offered diversion, why? So that'll be our next step in our Georgetown project, but trying to see if there's a way that that information can be obtained without Luke and myself reading all 250 files. It's usually something that's a narrative, so I don't know how we would get our IT people to be able to find it and pull it. So it may be a matter of looking through 250 files to find out, were they offered diversion? If so, why did they fail? And were they not offered diversion, why? So that is definitely a separate issue from this here, but certainly those kids can find themselves detained if they are placed out of their home and run from that placement.
But to Commissioner Borges' point, the reason, and I kind of see him as going together because what she stated, it's 30% of probation, which if that issue is alleviated, it's 30% of the time that they can spend on the really hard families that are there. 30% of attorney's time is not put in there. 30% less time in the court process that will free up stuff to start flowing and moving. So it's one of those things that you pull the pin on. But I guess I wanted to know too, Shelley, because I wanted to correct what I thought I, what I heard you say to Commissioner Borges and I was going to make sure it's clear. So what, and I knew, I thought I knew this from the data meeting, but just make sure, what stated in third quarter results, the 48.4 days is what's in this third quarter. But on the back, the 37 is specifically the warrants.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And those warrants are individuals that next year, from my understanding, talking to Mary and Heather, you all will not be detained because they don't fit. Some of those are in the deal of placement, which they won't...
Right, if it's because of a loss of placement or lack of a different alternative, that is not a reason to detain, starting July 1st.
So everybody over the state is going to have to come to grips with the service piece that's happening?
Correct.
Christopher, I mean, sorry. Yeah?
Yes. I'm very puzzled about why we're number two, but I think there's at least three reasons that would cause that. I think first may be a state law on truancy perhaps that's not skillfully written. I think the second one may be prosecutors who are filing charges, not using their discretion not to charge, kind of like sight and release or something, that equivalent. And the last one may be the judges. You would know, others here would know more than those three, but I think it's either state law, prosecutorial discretion, or the judges. And I'm really curious, what is, who is number 50? We're number two. Who's 50? Do you know?
I'm assuming it wasn't listed.
And because the old saying... I bet it's not Louisiana.
The old saying, I just said, people usually say, thank God for Mississippi.
Are you kidding?
So I don't know. I'm assuming it may be...
Okay, well, I guess what I would suggest is that I'd look at from, you know, number 40 on up to 50 and see what they're doing and what their laws say, because we obviously are not doing what they're doing. And I don't know if they don't care about kids skip the school or what their philosophy is, but I'd like to see what they're doing that we're not. And I, but I do think we probably ought to start, the easiest place to hit is the prosecutor. Tell them to quit doing this. I mean, it's, they have the discretion to file charges or not. And what we need in there instead of prosecutors is social workers. And, you know, a person who's, my experience has been that when you have, when you hire somebody to be a prosecutor, at the end of the year, they say, okay, how many, how many did you prosecute? Oh, 42,000, you know? If they said seven, then they're crappy supposedly. When I was mayor, I used to ask the condemnation division, how many houses did you condemn? And they'd brag about how many. Then I'd ask the redevelopment people right afterwards, how many did you save? Finally, I said, start talking to one another. And, you know, you step in and... So I think we need to ask the prosecutor, Mr. Klein, what's going on here? Because he has the discretion not to prosecute. And I think that's, that's the easiest place to start, to ask him to use his judgment and tell his people that you're not being, you're not being judged by the number of prosecutions, how many kids you throw into this situation. I think that's the simplest one. State law is a big mess, we can't deal with that. The judges, we all know what they think. They don't like us, so... But I think Mr. Klein would be someone to talk to. I have a question about, on the report, it's on the front page. And again, I understand, this says 49% for technical reasons, and that was lost or, I'm not sure what lost means, but lost or run from a placement, is that what, is that the only, technical reasons, is that what that means?
Technical reasons, right. There, that's not a new crime was committed, they violated some technical portion of their term.
And then the second, the one down from that is the average length of stay is 48 days. Why? Who's doing that? Is that a prosecutor failing to do something or an attorney failing to do something? Or is it that, you know, why does somebody sit in jail wherever they're at the detention used to, for 48 days? I mean, why are they there that long? And who are they? Not who, but what are the charges?
Well, I don't have all those with me today.
Okay, well, I like, that's pretty, that's pretty important because that could link it to the prosecutor again. Somebody needs to, we need to get our judicial system in shape because they should not be sitting, I don't want 48 days unless, it can't be, let's see, average length of stay of 48 days. And, I mean, what'd they do to earn that? So I'd like to know.
Can I offer, I think, from, this is just from the latest meeting that I've had with probation about some of those numbers that were there. My assumption on that is that, one, there are, there is a degree of kid that has been put there and that is waiting because there's not a high enough level of placement to put that kid in. And that kid may be sitting there for that. And the other piece is...
Not a high enough placement? What does that mean?
Let's just say, for instance, there may be some behavioral matter and they came in from the place they were at because the term used, they couldn't handle them or they decided that they didn't want to keep them.
So we don't have some place to send them?
A next level of care.
Okay, well, that's what I was talking about earlier with Commissioner Morgan. We need to open up the budget and say, okay, we need to shut this down and divert $5 million to mental health and youth. Because we're really missing the boat on that. We need to, if there, if there aren't places to send these, this high enough placement jank language, whatever that means, if there's no place to send those kids, we need to do something about it. And now.
And the second one is there may be kids waiting there to be sent to a placement somewhere, but there's not capacity to send them to that placement.
Not capacity?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's the same deal then. We need to come to grips with this and we need to quit sending them to places like Clorinda and all that stuff. I know of a kid in Michigan, this is ridiculous.
And let me know...
We need to focus on these, what you just said, Commissioner Rogers, we need to come up with the solution.
Let me know. I agree with you heartily. I think, I've heard Commissioner Borges say at times, it's definitely something we should be engaged in, but we shouldn't take the state off the hook for their share of assistance that needs to be there.
Sorry, I can't quite hear you.
It's that, it's definitely something that we should be involved in, but the state can't be taken off the hook totally for their share. And I know you had your hand up, I'm gonna give it to you, but this is the example that has been told to me. So let's say, for instance, there's Canyon State. There's a degree of kids that we send to Canyon State. The assumption is that we could put a next level of care here, but the best example is, we, it's like long-term care facilities. We have long-term care. The state's facilities around the other state are going to receivership. And one of the reasons we don't, probably won't, is because the backstop of the county is there to save us the balance of things. The Canyon State issue that the kids are sent to, they not only get kids from Nebraska, they may get kids from Texas, they may get kids from the East Coast, they get kids from Arizona, they get kids from all over the country. So their level of scale of being able to support that on the revenues that's generated is good. If we would get that here in Douglas County, the question is, who would be the backstop? Because there's not enough kids in the detention center that would justify having that just for Douglas County. So it'd have to be a regional discussion and a statewide discussion to make that flow and stay up to scale. And somebody's going to have to agree to backstop that when the traffic is not constantly where it is to keep it in operation.
Okay, well, I think for starters, you know, Boystown and Utahali and all these other places, there's ways to get this done. We have to. And I don't want the state involved in this at all. They are not up to it. They really, you know, they don't like Omaha, they don't like what we're trying to do. So I think just forget it and we're going to have to shift spending. We've got to decide this is important, that's what I think. I'm curious about, and I, but I would like to find out why and who are these kids? You know, are they shoplifting? Is this some kid that beat up another, his mother? Or, I mean, who is this? And what are the charges? You know, it makes a difference. I'd like to see who is doing this. And somebody, there's somebody falling down, and not you, but somebody's falling down not getting these kids out. And I don't know whether that's the prosecutor or the defense or who the hell it is, but I don't like it. The other thing down at the bottom here, you got, as I understand it, if this is correct, 80% of the youth that are detained are of color. 80%? So that's African-American and Hispanic, is that it? And American Indian?
Latinx, Asian, Pacific Islander.
Well...
I can't think of them all right now.
It's all...
Native American.
Non-white.
Native Hawaiian.
What's that? Well, we know, we got one Hawaiian or something, but I'm not sure if it's African-American, Hispanic, so...
Absolutely.
You know, and you mentioned something that other people have said many, many times, and they said it again today, about, you know, why don't, why don't you, in effect, to Douglas County, why don't you do something to stop this behavior before it happens? Well, we're not exact, there's so many people that are in the mix on that, including the schools and, I mean, the city has some things with the job programs, but I don't really know of anything that we can do to get into a home and say, okay, well, you're misbehaving, so now we're going to do this. I just don't think that's possible. I'm trying to figure out, how do we interrupt this? And, you know, but I don't know what to say. I don't have an answer to it. But it's very, it's nagging because that would be ideal. And I think, you know, educare and some of the things like that are certainly positive ways to do exactly that. But somehow, we got to figure out what this is all about. And I think your work at Georgetown, I think that's terrific, you do that because that's really helpful, really helpful. Okay, well, you'll send me an email that I'll share to the other commissioners or you can send it to Mr. Rogers and he'll...
About the charges specifically?
Yeah, about...
Yes, and we could do a separate data memo related to charges.
Why these kids are there? Okay, good deal.
If you'd like, but we really focus on the kids who are unnecessarily detained.
I understand, I'm just curious, you know, because if you look at what the charges are, or what, you know, that could tell us, you know, who's dragging their feet, or something's wrong. If they don't have a place to go, that's another matter, but...
Well, but understand, we're only talking about the forty-nine kids, so when you're talking about charges of those kids, you're not gonna see a lot of charges, because these are kids who are mostly technically violating. You wanna know back what their original charge is, correct? Not what they're coming for in this quarter, but what, what was the charge that then led to the unlawful absence? What was the charge that then led to a violation?
I guess, I don't know, I'm talking about that dot down here, how long were youth detained, average length of stay?
Okay.
Forty-eight point four days, is that just the technical reason, kids?
No, that's all the kids.
Okay, well, that's what I want, is all the kids. Why are they there?
That's all the kids. That's all the kids. And I don't know if this is help, helpful, but I will offer this, when you talk about, what do you do with these kids? Because I hear a lot about building places for kids, and as a former case manager, it's just not where it goes for me. These kids can go home. They're not kids that are a risk to our community, they're not kids we believe are going to fail to appear. They could go home with services that assist in increasing parental capacities to keep children safe in their homes. I think Nebraska generally is a state that wants to help kids, and sometimes our help just looks like putting kids in the system, instead of maybe backing off a little on families and asking them what they need, and giving them help with what they need, and not all the things we decide they might need help with once they're in the home. I can tell you, probation is doing probation transformation right now, which is exactly about this. Take the status offenders, put them where they belong. These are kids who are already too deep in the system, once they're on probation, for something like this. So, I think that they have a lot of new things going on with advanced case management and probation, a service matrix that's set, you know, when you look, what is, what is the viol, what is the charge truancy, kinda gives you an idea of what should happen in the life of the case, and on truancy, on a service matrix, anywhere around the country, it'll tell you, these are kids who don't go out of home, and yet somehow, in Nebraska, they do. And it is, a lot of times, the social issues, the family issues, that are hard for people to understand, but it doesn't mean we send kids away, it means we go into the home and see what they need. So, I think there's a lot of reasons, but I also think there's a whole lot of good happening in Douglas County, from every point in the system, to correct it.
I hope so. I think, you know, I mean, I agree with you, except this is not, and this is not a good report to me, I don't like to see this, these kids in for, you know, forty-eight days, I don't like that, I don't like the eighty percent number, that's not right. And, you know, there was that interesting thing on TV, this is not really, naturally not, when I talk, it's not necessarily related, but it was interesting, there was a program of a principal in a high school on the East Coast, and he just started this job, and a bunch of kids were getting bullied, and one of the primary reasons was because they were wearing the same clothes every day, and he discovered they had no way to wash their clothes. So, he installed washers and dryers there, in the high school, and the kids could, you know, do their clothing, do their washing. Somebody, I don't, it's amazing, just getting right to it, and that can change someone's life, you know, I mean...
It's a common story.
Yeah, just a real...
It's not as uncommon as people would believe, it's hard to be a kid, it's incredibly hard to be a kid when you go to school, and you feel different than the other kids.
Yeah, your clothing and everything else, anyway, I mentioned that, because sometimes these solutions are right in front of us.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks a lot, a very good report.
Commissioner Borges and Commissioner Kraft.
Well, are kids who are violated their probation order, and have a warrant, and are they automatically brought in and detained in the youth center until further court, for another court hearing to happen?
Okay, well, let's, I just want to clarify one thing, you either have a violation of probation or a warrant, so those would not be the same thing for the same child, okay? So, either you're gone, we don't know where you are, so we need a warrant to look for you, or you're here, something's happening, and you're violating. Not all violations of probation end up detained. I could give you a, get a percentage for that from probation as a whole, I only see the ones where it ends up in detention.
I would like to see that.
Sure.
Because that could be a huge piece when we look at stuff. But, you also brought up, I think it might be good to have Mary Bicek come and talk about that program, because I've been one that has harped long and hard about, the bureaucratic term is wraparound programs, but I have said long, for a long time, that we can send a kid to Timbuktu, and we can send them there for three months to three years, but you're bringing that kid, that child, back to the same environment, even if you haven't done anything to try to figure out what that family unit is in need of, before you bring that child back, you're setting that child and that family up for failure. So, the program that you mentioned, that probation is doing, seems to be a, kind of the, starting to see some light on that, and I would maybe have her come and report out to that. There are schools, Commissioner Boyle, that actually do have washer and dryers in them today, actually elementary have washer and dryers in them today, for that very reason. I also know of a case where the child was being cared for at a community program, and I think one of the other problems is sometimes we get too many people involved, and so, they were having the pow-wow of what was wrong, and it came out, single mom, worked at fast food, didn't get home until late, there was a fifteen and sixteen-year-old, female and male in the home, female was to do the laundry. Everybody got together, there was talk, and the question was asked to the little girl, "Why aren't you doing the laundry?" And it came out that they didn't have a washer and a dryer, that they had to do the laundry in the bathtub.
Mm-hmm.
Well, if we do the laundry in the bathtub, your clothes are not going to look or smell the same as others, and they were getting bullied or made fun of at school about it, so they quit going. So, the question was to all of the system people, well, who's gonna help get this washer and dryer? And it was this, oh, we can't, oh, we can't, oh, we can't, oh, we can't. The community provider went and got the washer and dryer, and had it delivered that night, and those children never missed another day of school. So, those issues matter?
Mm-hmm.
Those are issues that you and I may not have ever come across, or experienced, or understand, but that's where we have to go with some of this. And I go back to even looking at the zip codes, I actually had asked Brad to do the zip code map, so I could see, because again, sometimes this gets overwhelming when you're looking at it, but when you drill it down, and you start to say, you know what, there's a, there's juvenile justice issues, but there's a very small percentage, and we can fix this if we put our heads together and work together, and that takes a team effort. And again, in those two areas, or three areas on that map, if we could fix that, we would actually be fixing things across the entire county for kids and families. So, you know, I think there's a lot of good programs that have been developed, I think we do have to do a better job of using those community providers that are right in the community, that look like, talk like, know the folks that they're living with. And, in my opinion, we have failed at that, and we have to do a better job of that, and I think we'll start seeing some improvements in that.
You're good.
Yep.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes, I'd like to just briefly point out that the average length of stay, the Brad Alexander at our last Child and Youth Service Committee said he is going to be altering the way he measures average length of stay. Has he talked to you about that?
No.
Okay. He said something about, we are doing it in a way that is different than the rest of the community providers, and when he changes it, because right now, I'm trying to recall exactly what he said.
He tells that state twenty-four hours.
He'll only count you if you're there at least twenty-four hours.
Right, well, if you're there twenty-four hours or more, but he doesn't count the partial days. Other agencies count by the hour, so that their average length of stay, the numbers of people in there increase, because so many of our children don't stay a full day, they're in and out, that it's going to decrease that number that represents the average length of stay. Perhaps it'd be good to talk to Brad about that. I believe he said he's gonna try to get it on our next report.
He's gonna do it both ways?
That's right, he's gonna do it both ways, so we can have a comparison, so we don't have that abrupt change, where we say, hey, what happened? Thank you. But I did want to point that out for those in the listening audience and here.
So, Shelley, thanks. Let me note two points, to the point Commissioner Borges made, there's a conversation that I did have with Mary Thursday. So, in January, she said she's fine with it, to sitting down, to having a meeting specifically with providers, to, one, talk to them about what the need is, because some of the providers are offering service that they may not need, she's gonna talk to them about the process, and then, kinda talk to them a little bit about what can be done, from their perspective, and some suggestions to get everybody up to speed, so that will happen early next year. And the other piece, I'd just like everybody to note, right above the blue line, where it says third quarter results, she lists the average daily population of fifty-eight, and I want to note, that average daily population is just of juvenile offenses. And I make that note, because, you know, we get, there's, there's two numbers, there's the number that Brad has, because he gives you everybody in there that is adult charges and juvenile. I make that point, because the true number of kids, when this conversation comes up about safety, is probably about twenty to twenty-one kids that need to be there for safety reasons. These other kids are either waiting for service, or some, or some other case processing piece to get there. So, I just say that in regards to aspects of, the number can be hit, some of this is gonna happen next year, when six, seventy, eleven, twelve hits, and some of it, as was said, is us, the smaller this number gets, the harder the kid is gonna get, and we have to do some digging. So, I just say this, that there's a seventy-seven number running out, seventy-seven to seventy-five, that twenty is the true number that should be there, because that's the public safety risk. The other kids need family and other support, so. Shelley, appreciate your time, look forward to the fourth quarter. With that, we'll go to item G, and that's the Human Resource Report, there's the Weekly Personnel Report by Civil Service.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
I requested to make a public comment.
No problem, please do, sorry for that, my fault.
May I, may I please, is it five minutes or three minutes that you're allowed to speak?
Five.
Thank you. So, the comment that I wish to make is about some of the out-of-state placement options where we send children. I've recently been corresponding with some of you about Clorinda Academy, which is a for-profit business that exists in Iowa. Disability Rights Iowa has done some investigations about the lack of appropriate educational offerings for young people sent there. We, Nebraska sends kids to Clorinda Academy, and has continued to do so, as far as I know, right now, there are Nebraska kids in this facility. The four is, oh, thank you for Clor, I did not know that. Washington State was part of a federal audit, which is why Disability Rights Washington has gotten involved in this conversation, and Washington is removing all of the children from Clorinda, and I think that there are ongoing conversations with some of the other places that they are sending kids out of state for services. Interestingly enough, I believe the children from Washington are mostly children who failed in foster placements, and this is certainly a problem in our state, and in Douglas County specifically. In terms of the young man that is currently at the Lincoln Regional Center, he is a person, a young person who was removed from his grandparents' home when he was seven years old. I have, and other people, have talked repeatedly about his very unfortunate and truly terrible experiences in system care. Probably thirty different placements, he celebrated his twelfth birthday in the DCYC. He's been repeatedly at the DCYC. In my experience, and again, I don't have the benefit of having access to all the data, I'm much more in the weeds and dealing with individual families, but this was a young man who experienced behavioral situations in school, and I think, then, my understanding is, as young people go into these foster placements, if they're disruptive, if they display destructive behavior in terms of damaging things, this then leads to further escalation and charges, and deeper and deeper in. And my point in bringing up Clorinda, as you all know, we send kids all over the country, it isn't just to Arizona. Again, the young man that was sent to the Lincoln Regional Center spent a significant amount of time at a sister facility in Michigan that is also owned by Sequel. Again, this is a for-profit business. I am pleased that in the state that I now live, people there are making a strong commitment to asking questions about what sense it can possibly make to send young people thousands of miles from home, where these are, these are the types of children who have displayed behaviors that made it difficult for them to stay in public schools and in placements. The notion that by sending them away to a location where they are cut off from family, it is very difficult for the courts or the guardian abl items to monitor their behavior, this, you don't need a PhD to figure out that this makes absolutely no sense. It benefits people here who want to produce statistics that are more positive by then removing these problematic people from their programs. So, the last thing I will say, because there was some conversation about why kids run, this is an article from the Seattle Times that was published in March of 2018. Bedbugs, moldy food, skipped background checks, fed slam Washington foster group homes after surprise visits. I have Noah, and I won't read you the entire article, because you can use Google and find it yourself. What I will say is, who in Nebraska is looking into this? Who is keeping track of these kids? And don't, please don't tell me guardian abl item, because y'all know what I'm gonna say about that, given my lengthy time and energy invested in this issue. There is no way the guardian abl item can keep tabs on these kids. Cutting children off from everything they know, imagine what it would be like to take your suitcase, get on a plane, be cut off from every person you know, not have any contact with anyone, lose all your possessions. Is it any wonder that we have kids that come back and are even more damaged than when they left? Thank you.
There's Borges and Boyle and Kraft.
Laura, you will be, I think, pleased to know, that there are four that are in Clorinda that wanted to stay until they finished their education. There has been, since the conversations that we had in the past about Clorinda, a concerted effort for not only the judge and probation, probation officers and social workers to go to Clorinda to meet on a regular basis their children, which it was brought up as a discussion amongst this board and you in the past. There has been no referral to Clorinda, and I doubt that there will be in the future since May of this year. So, what, I think the important thing that we do is, again, stay focused on looking at who we are serving and what is missing, so that we can try to figure what, out which programs and services either need to be started here, or built to capacity, or are here and we're not using them. Because I am with you one hundred percent, that no child should have to be stripped from what and who they know to get the help that they need.
So, just yesterday, the Appropriations Committee in Washington was holding some hearings about this issue, and it is my understanding that one of the problems is that providers are often barely keeping it together financially in order to stay in business. I mean, this is the truth of the matter, so that if you have these sorts of infrastructure in a state or a city, how do you make that work? And in terms of Seattle, one of the big issues there is cost of living. So, many of the folks that work in these sorts of settings are making minimum wage, which is completely inadequate to pay the bills. You have lots of turnover with a population that is already very vulnerable, by virtue of all of the problems that they entered the system with, and so, they're discussing what, how do we create a backstop, so to speak, to make it so that these sorts of entities can stay in business? I don't believe that that is some unique thing in Washington, it has to be the same situation here. So, that means that we need a commitment, community-wide, to make, to ensure that those level of resources are available. And then, when you have a young man, or a young woman, who is experiencing some difficulties and gets angry, and destroys this projector, that isn't then the reason to kick the child out, to reject the child, which is how this currently works, and then you get deeper involvement, is my, from what I understand.
No, I agree with you wholeheartedly, and, you know, I've always had an issue, not that healthcare workers should not be protected, but when you have folks, whether it's a youth or an adult, in a mental health facility, and there is an incident that occurs, I know one youth who had an issue, and it, and it got physical, and he was slapped with two felonies, because of assaulting a healthcare worker. And, so, again, you know, there's, there's all of those incidences or cases that we can continue to talk about, but I think the one gentleman who was at the microphone earlier, for me, the prevention piece is also big, and intervention piece is also big, and then, again, what do we have in place, if they do make it into our system, and that we can get them out as fast as possible? And then, what are we gonna give them when they do get out, not to have them come back? So, but I can tell you that Clorinda has the eyes of many on it.
Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Kraft.
Well, I, it's really heartbreaking to listen to this, because this is, you know, deja vu all over again, this is going back many years to when I first got on the board, but the, one thing I will say that's very positive is that while this board has disagreements about things, this is one that I, I believe, my perception is, that we're totally in support of changes, just as Commissioner Borges and spoke, and Chair Rogers, so it's a good thing. But, you know, I, the thing that concerns me so much is that I would like to see us build something, offer incentives, or do it ourselves, like I said, refocus our spending, to create our own Clorinda here. And I, and maybe these resources are at Boyz Town, maybe they're somewhere else, maybe they aren't here, but I just can't believe that we can't do that ourselves. And I want to quickly tell a story, some years ago, some of you know about this, that I, a young man who was, was sent to Fremont for whatever reason, was thirteen years old or something, and he was, the caseworker called his grandmother and said, no one can bring him home for Christmas, it can't happen. And so, I said, well, I'll do it. So, I took, went up there, and I took his grandfather with me, because I didn't want, didn't think it was appropriate for me to be hauling this young man by myself. So, I went up to Fremont, and we went into the house, it was in a crummy neighborhood, a real crummy, with a couple couches on the front porch here and there, on a yard, got it, knocked on the door, and they knew we were coming, and there was a, when we got inside, it was very dimly lit, and older teenagers slouched on the floor playing with, you know, games and stuff, and there was something on a television set, and furniture was real crummy, and so, I, the young woman who was in charge... And so the young woman who was in charge of him wasn't much older than the young kid she was watching. And then, so I went in, I said, I need to go into, I want to go into his room, and she looked really startled, and so I got into his room. His clothes were piled in a small cardboard box, and there was nothing, no sheet or anything on a cot he was sleeping on. And so, anyway, those places are, that's horrible, and we have a contract with them. That's one of our big contractors the state has. And, you know, this all has to change, and we're talking about money, we do have to shift tax dollars out of some services. Maybe we shut, frankly, maybe we shut down all the auto branches around town, and everybody has to start using the mail, something, or the internet, and use those millions of dollars to feed this into mental health. So I'm very serious about opening up the budget again, and we're going to, I think we need to have some discussion. But I'm glad we're on this subject again today, and for many years, I asked that the people, I'm still concerned that people that are working in these facilities, I don't, I'm not comfortable that they're vetted because it's such low pay and the turnover's high, and some of the things that went on in Clorinda reminds me of what happened in Beatrice with some of my brother-in-law down there. It was terrible. So anyhow, that's how I feel, and I'm glad we're having this discussion today, and I appreciate the skill and the knowledge that you have, Commissioner Borgeson, and also Commissioner Rogers. We all feel this way, and you really speak well for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Craft.
Yes, two quick comments. Laura, would you send us a link to that article or tell us the source? Thank you. And Laura, you were in the office last Tuesday, I think, and I went to catch you and you were gone immediately, because I would like to talk to you sometime, perhaps Thursday morning at La Cartier, if you have free at 10 o'clock?
[inaudible]
Okay. I'd have to check my schedule for any other day, but...
I'll leave you my phone number.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I know you're all anxious to get on to other matters, but...
Give your name again, Larry.
I happen to know this lady.
Larry.
I just recognized who she is.
Larry, give your name for the record again.
Once again, Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette. I don't think she had to repeat that, but...
She did.
I just realized who you are here, and thank you for your work. You know, maybe a lot of this is due to progressive thinking, where progressives generally think that they know better than we do, so we've got to listen to them. You have some legislative things going on with the state. The state thinks you should listen to them. But, you know, I'm really opposed to what I see going on down there. It's not all your fault because they have progressive people that are unelected officials that are helping them write laws such as child find and such as early intervention because they think they know better, this is what we should do. But you need to slow down and think about, well, excuse me, have you ever seen a squirrel or a rat that's cornered, doesn't want to be cornered, or a bird? What happens? They're going to fight to get out, aren't they? Well, let's be careful about building more Clorindas because we have sent kids to Clorinda. We have sent some kids to Glenwood. And unfortunately, those institutions also have problems, and some of those kids have been abused. When we take the kids out of our community, out of our schools, and give them to somebody else, we're going to have problems. Do you not think that that kid feels like a trapped squirrel? Do you not think that he wants to get physical to get out of there? If he's got some mental problems, he doesn't process quite as fast, does he? So he doesn't necessarily hear that counselor trying to calm him down. He's probably not listening. But that counselor's not paying any attention either because he's going down that checklist of, oh, that kid maybe needs to be detained. We need to get him in for assessment without knowing that kid. I'm going to reiterate a couple of instances with emergency admissions. And the so-called professionals say, excuse me, that's just a behavior problem. No, it isn't always just a behavior problem. And a behavior problem isn't always fixable. But they don't ask what's the cause of the behavior, and this is what you're trying to get at here. Very quickly, maybe we should back up to find out what's wrong with the community, what's wrong with the family? Why do we have so much disparity? Is there something wrong at the family level? Are there not enough fathers at the family? Is there too much reliance on welfare bringing our kids up? Maybe we should get back to that instead of sending our kids out of state. But don't start assessing them right away. You have to detain them to assess them, don't you? Forty-eight days to assess? Excuse me, I don't think that's very constitutional. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Craft, and Commissioner Borgson.
Thing that I, Larry. The thing I wanted to say was kind of comment on some of your remarks. One of them is that, you know, we are not in control of anything that you spoke about. You know, the judges make the decision to send these children where they are supposed to go, where they want them to go. And in recent emails, Commissioner Borgeson, I asked her, I brought up the point of, you know, who are these kids and why are they in Clorinda and all this stuff? So Commissioner Borgeson did ask and was not so politely told, butt out.
That was the Lincoln Regional Center. I got the answer to Clorinda.
Or did you? Okay. Well, the Lincoln, anyway, so these kids are in Lincoln Regional, so the answer was, it's none of your business. And we're not answering commissioners. So we don't have that authority to do it, you know, we're not responsible for it. It makes us crazy. We used to pay close to $4 million a year to send these kids out so the judges could use that money. And the other thing is, I mean, it just, it's, you know, and we're not, we don't have any way to really get into this early intervention thing. It's just not, we don't have a program or we don't have the ability. The only thing we can do is try to care for them once they're in our system, and that's where we are, trying to figure out what's the best thing we can do for them once they're here. That's why I talked about maybe not prosecuting them, maybe, you know, doing something else. Anyway, I really appreciate your comments. I do have to make one slight last one, and that is, I think you could count the progressives in the legislature on, you know, one hand. I could name it.
And let me say that I know it's not easy. It's much easier to be on this side than it is that side.
Not really. We're in this together.
My wife says, speak your mind, but ride a fast horse.
We're in this together.
But let me also sum up what I think one of the roots of the problems are, the privacy laws. Now, when you have some time, read the federal laws on that and determine what the intent is. The intent of every law should be to solve a problem or to prevent problems. And I can tell you as a grandparent that doesn't have status unless I fight for custody, that there's not one political entity body or professional that wants to listen or do anything about what they hear. And I've been all the way from the ground level to the state, and not any one of those individuals want to talk about it because of privacy laws. Excuse me, you can't solve the problems if you don't talk about it. And if you don't want the input, you're not going to come up with a too correct solution. And then you've got that squirrel in the cage down there. Thank you.
Commissioner Craft.
No, I, let's answer.
Commissioner Borgson.
Well, I just want to make a comment because I think sometimes, and believe me, I think as we grew up with a two-parent household and things have changed over the course of time, just because someone doesn't have a father in the home doesn't automatically mean that that family has trouble. I know a lot of single families, whether it be the mother or father, raising children who have done a spectacular job. Sometimes I get, they get criticized, and that's not fair. And when you talked about being on welfare, I'm assuming that you meant Medicaid, and I just want to reiterate that 40% of Medicaid is actually paid for our seniors' services. And then, thirdly, where nobody cares, I don't think that's true. I think that we, as this county board, have heard and have acted upon many things. I know many of us have gotten individual calls from families that need help, and we've done everything that we possibly could and can to help that family. So, again, sometimes we paint a broad brush over things, and we have to really take a step back and not do that because that's not fair to a lot of folks that are successful in raising their children and have been successful, so.
All right. I scratched the wrong item off by mistake. Thank you, Catherine. Community services, there is one item. Item one is the reallocation of the 2018-19 Visitor Improvement Fund grant award for 2019 for the Cinco de Mayo event. You want to handle this, Commissioner Craft, or you want me to go there? Commissioner Craft.
There is a change in who is the fiduciary agent. Used to be South Omaha Business Association, and now it's going to be Santa Lucia, oops, I lost my screen here. Now it's going to be a Santa Lucia, not Santa, Cinco de Mayo organization called Cinco de Mayo, Omaha. David Catlin was on the board of South Omaha Business Association. He's also on the board of the Cinco de Mayo Omaha Organization. So what it is, is just to satisfy the legal purpose of changing the agency, and I would vote, suggest that we vote for this.
Make a motion.
There's a motion by Commissioner Borgson. Is there a second? By Commissioner Craft? Commissioner Duda?
I trust the Cinco de Mayo organization is a qualifying nonprofit. Very good, thank you.
Can we check that out?
Thank you.
Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes.
Item one is the weekly, under human services, item one is the weekly personnel report from civil service that's submitted. Item three is a resolution setting the calendar year 2019 wage increase for average non-union community employees. Patrick, you want to explain this?
So commissioners, in August, the county board set a 3% pay increase for non-union employees on the civil service pay lines range in step. This resolution would be to set the pay increases for the other county non-union employees such as bailiffs, juvenile courts, district court, county attorney, public defender, chief deputies, and et cetera. So that would be for January of 2019.
Commissioner Morgan.
Patrick, I believe that's set at 4%.
Chief deputies, it is set at 4%, except for John Friend is asking for 5% due to a compression, pay compression issue between his chief deputy and his assistant chief deputy.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to have that be at 3% rather than the 4 or 5, if we could.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion, a second, without any discussion on this adjustment.
Thank you.
Okay, we're voting on an amendment to the resolution.
Motion passes. Commissioner Boyle, Craft, Morgan, and Borgson voting yes. Rogers, Kavanaugh, Duda voting no.
We have an amended motion. What's the will of the board on this?
Most approve.
There's a motion. There's a second. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Craft.
I was hoping the sheriff was still...
Please vote.
One second, please.
Somebody call Dunne and Thomas. I vote yes.
And we had a motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Craft on the...
Yes.
Okay, and we are ready. Commissioner Borgson.
This was the amendment that you...
Motion passes. Commissioner Duda voting no. Other commissioners voting yes.
There is a need for executive session for litigation and negotiations. What's the will of the board? There's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Craft, to go into executive session for litigation and negotiations.
It's just any minute now. I'm sure we've got a schedule as quick as we can.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes.
And again, we're going to executive session for litigation and negotiation. And again, we're going to executive session for litigation and negotiation.
For all those in the audience.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, you're a yes? Commissioner Kavanaugh? You're a yes? Okay. All right, motion passes. You're a yes, Commissioner Boyle? Okay, super.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, yes.
So on the last resolution of the...
It was three, yeah, all of the...